Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November the 4th council meeting.
We're going to start with a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Velardo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Evans?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Redmond? Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
Mr. Haskins?
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Redmond. Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Thank you. So, if you're watching us on Facebook Live, it's Thursday. You might be wondering why we're here on a Thursday. The Board of Elections uses our council chambers for their polling precincts. So, we always move our council meeting this week to accommodate them. Speaking of which, I want to get on my soapbox for a minute. I want to talk about how proud I am of the city and what's just happened here Tuesday. I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Evans and Kim on being reelected, as well as Janet Cooper to council. Congratulations, ladies. You ran unopposed, so that must mean that we are doing something right because nobody runs against you. So, midterms are a good thing. Also, the park levy passed, park levy and the school levy. So, great things are on the horizon. What's fascinating to me is countywide, only 23% of the population voted. I'm just going to let that sink in for a second. 23% of the residents of Claremont County made the decisions that affect your day-to-day life. Midterms elections are nothing to gloss over. They're worth getting out and voting for, and it's very disappointing that more people don't take it seriously and get out there and vote for people. You know, when you put yourself as an elected official, it takes guts to be an elected official because you spend a lot of your time not making everybody happy. So, when you put yourself out there, it would be nice if there was some support or for the people that seem to have a lot of opinions, maybe they could come to some council meetings and/or reach out to one of us. You know, as we all know, the charter amendment didn't pass. Nobody asked me a question. So, yeah, I just thought it was worth mentioning that I think we're all doing a great job. That's the moral of the story. We're all doing a great job. We have what's best in mind. Most of us grew up here, so I just hope that, you know, people just don't take the presidential elections and they start considering the midterm elections. So, that's all for my soapbox today. All right. So, let's talk about something exciting. I think Tim Casso is here to talk about our pavement management study. He's with the Klineinger Group. Do you want to approach the bench and tell us what you're here to present today?
Yes. Thank you, Amy. So, we'll go ahead and get the, got just a quick, quick presentation here just to brief folks on the pavement study. So, we have prepared a pavement study and all is right to... Bound pavement studies. I think was the request.
We can read.
So, we got those. It's just a brief...
Thank you.
...kind of overview of the report. We looked at the pavement, the curbs and the catch basins. We did a rating across the city, and you'll see the, some of those heat maps in the, in the report that kind of shows, you have kind of green, yellow, red, those classic colors for the pavement curb and catch basin conditions. The pavement is the, kind of the wow there because we do have a good representation for the pavement ratings across the city. Sam, if you want to hit the... So, we've got generally just a, and we've looked at, there's a couple of streets here they actually see physically in the, on the website, but we've extracted those out from our data set for what we're looking at. So, with the 33 centerline miles for the city, and we've got a kind of overall network rating for the city of around 64 for a pavement condition index. So, it's kind of a, from zero is the absolute worst dirt street to 100, a freshly paved new road. So, the, as a composite for the community, it's a rating of 64. Sam, do you want to go ahead and just kind of show the, those categories? There, so that kind of 85 to 100, that green area there, that's, that's a kind of an average nine. It's a pretty decent new street. Kind of that next category, yellow, is in that average of 70, and that's more of a, the type of road that would need some type of light resurfacing for a rehabilitation. And then kind of getting below that in that next category, that orange, you're getting into a pretty distressed pavement, a lot of cracking, a lot of physical distress. And then that red rating, that's, that's a pretty substantially deteriorated road. And just to, for, kind of connect what that looks like, we've got representations of the, for the streets here. So, that average 64 pavement rating for the community, that would represent, you know, Center Street. So, that would be the, what the average street in Milford looks like. It's that 64 pavement condition rating. And then looking at maybe what 10% above that would look like, that would be Cemetery. And then 10% beneath that is Crestview. And you can actually see the surface, you see more cracking, more, more evidence of deterioration on that surface. And then, everyone's favorite here is coming up, Brooklyn. So, you can see that's a pavement condition of 44. So, that's a, and you can see there, there's, there's some substantial cracking, loss of the surface. We've got some potholing there on the right side there towards the edge. That's going to be a full-depth repair to try to remediate that. So, there's some substantial work that's going to have to be done to, to improve Brooklyn on the pavement. So, it's kind of, what does this mean? So, we're able to take composite information from, from, we've got several data points from Milford and other communities here in southwest Ohio, and we're able to plot what that pavement condition is and the age of that pavement. So, we're able to kind of do that scatter plot there, and that blue line is kind of a representation that over time, your pavement, if left with, with no, no treatment to it, is going to start to deteriorate. And there's a point there in that, that 50 pavement condition rating where you're going to have to have some type of substantial work done to that pavement to bring that back up, get that back up to that 100 range. And so, you can see after that, that 50 range, on typical average, you might be in that, you know, 25 to 30-year range. Once that pavement gets that age, you're going to have something that, that looks pretty beat up, pretty deteriorated. So, this gives us some, some idea of where we are from the, from the 64 average rating. And we looked at, what if we took out the alleyways? That was one of the conversations that we had with that. And what we were actually, were, were kind of surprised a little bit by that. It, it made like a two-point difference. There's only 2.1 miles of alleyways, and they weren't, there's some bad alleys, but they, they weren't as a whole so substantial that it, taking those out raised that substantially as, as across the entire city, just from the mass of the, the public streets in the city compared to the alleyways. So, just as a, a kind of planning for the future and looking at that curve and what do we need to do to maintain that pavement at that, that current rate? So, we started looking at those scenarios of, of how much pavement do we need to improve every year to maintain that? And if we're looking at, and this is now taking out the alleyways, if you were to replace or resurface 1.5 miles of pavement every year, that's around a cost of $450,000. And before, when we were looking at the alleyways and that, I think we were...
Around two.
Or around two miles for a dollar amount of 600-ish to maintain. So, if we're looking just at the core public, main public streets, so we're able to bring that down just because of that, that kind of boost and improvement there. And to, and if, you know, just from a level of service to, to bring that up, if we wanted to do that 10% betterment on average across the city, that type of annual rate would be 615,000, just to kind of give an idea of, well, what if we want better streets on average? What would that be? On the flip side of that is, if we're looking at a 10% decline in the, the overall average for the streets, that would be a .9 mile on average rate of 290,000 a year for resurfacing. So, it kind of gives us some opportunities to start balancing what type of level of service would we expect or want for the city and how do we do that? Now, the benefit of this is that, you know, with these dollars, they're not necessarily 100% local Milford dollars. I mean, these dollars can come from other funding agencies. We've got, you know, those opportunities to, to start to do that. And some of the resurfacing that we've had on Main Street here past few years, that's a, an 80/20 split with ODOT for the surface course. So, those are outside dollars that are being able to brought in and, and address this, this situation. So, it's not necessarily a 100% Milford cost to this. The other opportunities we have is, you know, streets with pavement condition under 50, those are eligible, very, you know, they, they score well with OPWC from a condition basis, too. So, just comparative to what other communities are bringing in to, with their OPWC requests, that would be a comparable, fundable project for them. So, so there's those opportunities there with, you know, when you look at Brooklyn and, and compare that to what other communities are bringing in, that's a comparable condition for a street, for an OPWC or other grant opportunities there. So, is that, is that our...
That's the PowerPoint, yeah.
The PowerPoint. And now, just to go ahead, that, in the report, it gives you the, the website, and I actually think this was posted on Facebook and, and put out there, too. So, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to, to get on there to, to look at that. But this is, this is a live website that's, that's there, and, and you can actually, you can zoom in to...
This will actually can give you more of a better look, section, section, street by street, section by section of where everything is rated. Tim talked about the PCI score. You can click on individual roads and individual sections, and it'll tell you in that area what the, what the rating is, the PCI number, what kind of distresses there are, patches, sealants, potholes, and then if you even want to get down further, you kind of have your own personal street view from the data we collected here. You can ride along and go step by step and see individual areas of the street, which could be good for service folks or anyone working in the streets department. Identify anything, potholes, anything like that that could need to be fixed. If you zoom back out, speaking of potholes, you can, there's a layer just for those where you can turn those on and show every single one within, within the city limits there.
So...
Flag there. These are mostly on the edge of the street, but things like that. It's, it's basically a host or a web hosting for, for all the data that we collected for the, the street or the pavement assessment. And you can even, you know, if you're not as much of a visual person, you want to see it at a table, it's, it can be broken out that way as well if it'll load. So, it can be broken out by, by type of street, condition. There's the, the 1 through 5, just general rating for the, the heat map. And then if you go to the individual stress analysis in here, you can look at it by street. And you can drill down and find just the worst, the worst streets, just different, different types of deterioration that you're looking for. Like I said, more for probably a streets department to, to look at, and then just by street, it breaks down all your data in kind of a tabular form. So, that's all kind of hosted on this website and for, for the city to view, the account and the information that was in the, in the report itself.
Such a great cross-referencing tool. There's so many different ways you can look at it.
Yes, and this, this gives us some basis to, you know, what, what streets should we be tackling? Where do we approach things? It also gives us some interface with the other departments, water, sewer. And we should be resurfacing a street that water is planning in two years to come back and put a, a water main down the, the middle of that. So, it invites those conversations, too. Maybe there's a project that they might move up, or maybe there's some paving work that we may need to, to move back. And it also gives us some, what do we need to do maybe to hold together that street for X number of years until we get a, you know, that water main project in or that, that sanitary sewer project that, to be able to sort of stabilize it and hold, hold, hold tight with that pavement condition and try to hold that as best we can for that. So, it gives us a lot of opportunities for those discussions.
How often is this updated? So, for instance, if we repair a street or by the same token, if a street just deteriorates, how often is it updated?
So, this is, the intent here is not necessarily to have a ongoing moment by moment as, as things are being repaired or, or fixed. The intent is, this is, because it's allowing us to look at this as more of a system-wide, this will be more of an annual, biannual type look. And some of this is that over time, you're starting to see what streets are deteriorating faster because there's some streets that are, are deterioring on a slower rate, and especially if you've got tree-lined streets, you know, they don't dry out as much. They're, they're wetter, longer. They freeze first. They freeze longer. You know, those streets might, might be deteriorating faster than, than other streets that may not have necessarily that canopy overtopped. And so, there's, there's, you know, all those different factors, but that, that gives you the, the data to start identifying those, and then you can start to say, oh, you know, for that street, that curve looks different than, than your typical or average curve. And then you think, oh, do we need to do something sooner? Or, you know, what do, kind of gives you that data so then you can react to it.
I think it's, it's important to convey that this is online for the public. It's, it's public access. I don't know if you have the website. We have it on our Facebook. If you haven't, the password, anyone in the city of Milford can get on, take a look at their street. I mean, this is almost a block per block analysis of that, and you'll get a pretty good idea of where your street stands in, in this rating system. So, I encourage anybody. It's, it's a great tool.
Yes.
Interactive tool in that sense, and people can get a really good understanding. Again, this is going to help us for years to come when we do capital, capital budget planning for all of our streets and using this criteria. And as, as Tim mentioned, you know, with grant funding as well, certainly gives us a great analytical tool. It's kind of a building block support for these, these grant applications as we make them.
Yes, and, and having the, the pavement condition index is something that we, we put directly into the, the OPWC application or whatever funding application is because we actually have an, an objective condition rating for that. It's not, everyone can say, well, my pavement's the worst. Worst is subjective, and that's why there's engineering analysis that goes to a DOT-approved type of index that you can say, no, it's this, and it's a, a more accurate depiction of your pavement.
Do you have the website and password, or I'm not putting you on the spot?
The website, website, yeah, it's roadway.robotics.com.
Tim, he doesn't, he's not mic'd. Someone picked it up.
Okay.
Yeah, the website is roadway.robotics.com, and then the password is Milford is awesome, and every one of those words is capitalized.
Milford is awesome is the password.
Capital M, capital I.
No space. All caps.
Yep. Not all caps, but capital M, capital I, capital A.
Got you.
And if anyone didn't get that, we'll, we'll bring that post we did a month or so ago back up so, so people have an opportunity to, to get on there if they didn't get quite that address or anything.
Yep, and that's, and the data is sampled every 10 feet. So, it, and it's using AI. It's, it's using a, a lot, a lot of technology in there for that. So, maybe not every data point is 100%, but in aggregate, that's where the power comes through. Uber technology.
There you go.
It's really great.
So, apparently, when the Uber has their autonomous vehicles driving around, this is the information that they throw out.
Oh.
They don't care about cracks. They don't care about potholes. They don't, you know, they're looking for other things. So, then if somebody figured out, hey, all this stuff it's throwing out is, you know, pretty pertinent to this. So...
Awesome. Brilliant. Any questions? Thank you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. While they're gathering their belongings, we'll move on to proceedings. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the October the 19th meeting, and do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Obstain.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Correspondence? Jackie, I believe we have some correspondence this evening?
Yes. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a hearing for Speedway LLC, doing business as rich, oil 5075 at 716 Main Street, Milford, Ohio 45150.
Make a motion, we do nothing?
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. Financial statements. Just acknowledging that everyone has received the September finance report. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Public comments. This takes us to our first public comment section. Is there anybody in the office, in the audience who would like to address counsel? There being none, once again, prove my point. Standing committee reports. Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I called the October 29th public service meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. President were myself, Ted Haskins, and Mayor Amy Velardo. Also, we had City Manager Michael Doss, Finance Director Pat Worthlin, Service Department Supervisor Ed Hackmeister, and Administrative Assistant Jackie Bane. We did not have any visitors. The October 1st public service committee minutes were also approved. The first item was, on the agenda was a quote for the third-floor door entrance improvements at City Hall. City Manager Michael Doss discussed improvements to the third floor of City Hall, specifically a remodel of the tenant control bionics area to improve the kitchen area and take out the current doorway to the old chamber office door and make a main entrance into the control bionics office. Also, to place a wall in the great, open great room area to divide the room so that they will have a designated research and development section in the office. The fire inspector has inspected the area and is fine with the plans. Service Department Supervisor Ed Hackmeister received quotes from contractors to do this work. Osborne Reconstruction Service has the lowest and best quote at $9,473.51. The committee agreed to make a recommendation for the law director to draft an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Osborne Reconstruction Service in the amount of $9,473.51 for improvements to the third floor of City Hall.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
The second item on the agenda was a discussion regarding True Hotel tap fee rebates. Mr. Doss explained to the committee that the new True Hotel paid utility tap fees for water and sewer back on March 13th, 2020. Later that year in August, Mr. Doss received an email from the, one of the owners of the hotel stating that they wanted to utilize our utility discount program, tap fee, and property tax rebates. They signed the incentive in July of this year. They have been asking the city, if the city would reimburse them back for the water and sewer tap fees. This was requested after the fact. This payment has already gone through the system. Mr. Doss asked the committee to consider reimbursing the water tap fee and sewer tap fee. Mr. Doss also asked the committee to consider ending this incentive rebate program, possibly to reinstate this program sometime in the future. Ms. Worthlin agreed with Mr. Doss and encouraged the city to either revoke the incentive or reward it to put a timeframe on it or a dollar limit. It has served a good purpose with bringing good business to the city. The nature of this city has changed, where folks are wanting to invest in the city a lot more. One other thing you might see is an appropriation amendment. Come down the road in a couple of weeks and see what funds they come out of, if that is what we decide to do. Mr. Doss explained that these incentives are not as enticing as they used to be, but they did serve a purpose. We can look at business coming into the city on a case-by-case basis as they are received. If the business is going to bring jobs and significant investment, a heavy water user, we can consider either waiving or rebating, then structure that information. But for now, the program has run its course. The committee would like to discuss further at the upcoming budget session. The committee agreed for the law director to draft an ordinance authorizing a rebate to True Hotel for a water tap fee in the amount of $36,000 and a sewer tap fee in the amount of $38,000.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mayor Velardo brought to the committee's attention an issue she was reminded of regarding the flooding on Laurel Avenue. Rainy season has come in, and Mr. and Mrs. Howland wanted to know the plan for Laurel Avenue and what will be done with the extra paving of asphalt on the street. When there is a heavy storm, the basements in the area become flooded. Currently, the discussion is to revert it back to the way it was and to get rid of the asphalt by graveling the area and use permeable pavement material in that. the asphalt by graveling the area and use permeable pavement material in that area. There was no issue in the area until the area was paved and they would like it restored back to the way it was. It is believed, it is believed that mainly staff can work on this project and once it is completed, it will allow one flood a year with only a few inches rather than numerous flooding with over a foot of water each time in the basements. Mr. Tim Casto is putting together a program that will be discussed during the upcoming budget session. I asked if there was any way for us to get a grant for a project like this. Mr. Doss stated that the state is opening their approach to stormwater a lot more. He did not know for sure with the OPWC if this would score well. We can look into upcoming infrastructure bill that is coming through and check other upcoming opportunities for Laurel Avenue and Tyler Avenue. The Laurel Avenue project is expensive. If it were to get completed, it would act as the main stormwater arterial for all South Milford and area. I was interested in how we channel our water system here in the city. What is our best sustainable way to deal with this on a long-term basis? Mr. Doss discussed how with our city engineer, we fix our systems that will also complement what we do in the future. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 10:00 AM with a motion from Ms. Velardo, seconded by Mr. Haskins.
Thank you, Mrs. Chamberlain. City Manager report, Michael Doss, and I want to note that we have a question about the timing of the park levy. I believe you're going to address that in your report?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We had mentioned the Ohio Public Works grant update. Our Wallace Avenue supply water line and our Garfield Avenue discharge line projects continue to score high at the OPWC district level. We anticipate that both of those projects will be funded. We will have a very good understanding of that on November 16th when they meet. Gets out of district typically, it goes to the state. The state approves it based off the district recommendation. So we feel it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we'll receive that funding. Another item of update, the 2022 state capital budget. We did put in an application for a canoe and kayak launch at Jim Terrell Park. This new launch will provide better river access and assist with emergency response and river rescues on the Little Miami River. The state capital budget is a direct appropriation from the Ohio General Assembly and the governor's office, it's the state budget. So these items are earmarked. We have to go through Claremont County and the Claremont County Port Authority as well of the other projects within Claremont County and they are scored and then the Port Authority and Claremont County advocate on the behalf of those projects at the state level. So we're putting that in there. I do appreciate support from the Milford Community Fire Department, Chief Baird, also the Miami Township Fire Department who wrote a letter of support and the Claremont County CBB because they understand not that this is not only a recreational opportunity with all the tourism that we've seen, especially in the last several years on Little Miami River, but also the safety issue with that, with river rescue and getting those rescue boats down here on Milford in case there was any type of emergency on the river. So it's very important, it's a dual project in a sense, it serves two purposes. So we put in a very strong application and we feel pretty good about that, so we'll see where that goes with scoring. As the mayor mentioned, and we didn't have a query online, Five Points Landing Park levy did pass, so we want to thank the residents of Milford for approving that levy. That is a five-year, three-mil levy. Revenue proceeds derived from the property tax will not be realized until 2023. So we have a whole year before we start to get that revenue in, but we have a lot of time to plan and get some technical aspects. So next year in 2022, the city will be working with engineers and landscape architects to provide technical services, do the gut work if you will of the park project, do the lining with all the water lines, the sewer lines, all the upgrades, everything that needs to be there, kind of the blueprint for that. The city will also explore securing financing for the park project and what we anticipate doing is utilizing those tax proceeds from the levy to pay the debt. So we'll look at funding that project next year. Instead of just piecing that together, we'll go and get the 2.8 million and then use those revenue proceeds to pay on that debt service. After we secure funding for that, we will begin to advertise, accept and award construction bids for that project. We're hoping to also do that in 2022. So we are estimating that in 2023, when the weather breaks, everything is good, we'll start on that project. The project will take roughly a year. But hopefully in 2024, everything will look great. We'll realize the totality of that Five Points Landing Park. Another side piece I don't have in my report that's really important is now that the levy has passed and we have a revenue stream that will be coming in, we will be able to leverage those funds as any match with any other grants that are out there. I'm already eyeballing a federal grant that I believe the city of Loveland is also looking into for their parking garage. They've expanded the criteria of that to include recreation and tourism. So I know we talked about phase two, phase two being the pavilion piece. So we think we may have an opportunity to apply for that and now we have $2.8 million we can leverage as a match.
That's awesome.
So that looks a lot better and a lot enticing to get essentially phase one and phase two completed by the time this levy expires. Just another item, as we get close to the holidays, hard to believe, hometown for the holidays, just want to let the public, let council know, just a few weeks out from hometown for the holidays. The holiday tree lighting will be scheduled for Friday, November the 26th, Friday, November the 26th at 6:30 at Memorial Park, 6:30 at Memorial Park. Santa, of course, will be there with Mrs. Claus and they will assist with the tree lighting and also be there to greet the children, young and old. There are no standing committee meetings at this time, although I do anticipate having an administrative service committee, so we'll be soliciting those committee members for a date and time to meet, possibly next week. And then some important reminders, November the 9th is our city council budget session and that will begin at 5:00 here in council chambers. November 10th is a planning commission meeting, a couple of items on planning commission, that's at 6 o'clock, November 10th. Reminder to the public and council that November 11th is Veterans Day and our city hall offices will be closed. And then our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is November 16th at 7:00.
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Also important to note, while we're talking about the holidays, Miami Township has their holiday parade. November the 18th, it starts at, oh, Burger King in that area, goes up 28 to dance, et cetera, pulls into Meyer Drive and kind of ends there. So that's November the 18th. I believe a lot of us are going to be participating in the old fire truck and will be a part of that, that's a nice parade. Chief Mills, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
You should have my October report, but I'll touch on some of the highlights. In terms of training, in addition to our annual, I'm sorry, our regular monthly training, we held our annual less lethal in-service training and that's where the officers qualify on their taser, throw OC spray in their baton. Some notable occurrences during the month of October, officers responded to a domestic incident on Potawatomi Trail where the aggressor was charged with felonious assault and domestic violence. A female last weekend reported being shot in the back area with a pellet in the 400 block of Main Street. Unfortunately, she waited about three hours to report that, so we don't have any viable leads at this time. Several intelligence updates regarding the Glacier Gang involving thefts from and of vehicles, we've probably all seen that on the local news and social media. We have locally experienced an uptick in thefts from vehicles, no auto thefts recently, but even the thefts from vehicles, we have no indication that it's related to the Glacier Gang, but the same crime prevention tips always prevail, you know, lock it or lose it, move it or lose it. The old belief that leaving your car unlocked is going to save you, the hassle of replacing a window just simply is not true. You are always better locking your vehicles and also removing anything valuable from sight. The city restroom and concession stand at Riverside Park was vandalized and Detective Kenny identified and charged a suspect with theft offense that occurred at Rhodes Rivers and Trails. Couple administrative items, we assisted Patterson Elementary with their annual lockdown drill and Officer Wilson has been selected to serve as our next detective beginning in January. Some community relations items, officers attended the Chili Cook-Off at the Masonic Lodge. Officer Wilson spoke to the after-school program at Patterson Elementary about home safety. Sergeant Kibbe assisted a homeless couple that was found trespassing on the Holiday Inn site. The Wyler Driven Project was amazing, that's going to be an annual event. Chief Baird and I just attended a wrap-up meeting with Kevin Frye from Wyler and by all accounts, it was just a fantastic event, first of its kind in the United States. It's only been done in Canada, but friendships were made, bonds were formed, this is going to be an annual event. I held the Kiwanis Club self-defense class throughout the month of October and Squad Two assisted the Kiwanis Club with their food drive.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I agree with you, that Driven Project, nothing short of amazing. Fire NEMS, Chief Baird. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I put the delinquent September report in front of you. I pretty well had already covered it last month, but all the information is there. And so I don't really have a formal report, that'll come in the second meeting, but I want to make everybody aware of the fact, we hit it pretty hard on social media and I know it was out among the staff, at least the staff, I hope it got out to the elected officials, but yesterday I had gotten a text from a former coworker here that said he'd gotten a text trying to peddle t-shirts that, under the guise that they were, that they were Milford Community Fire Department selling that. And Miami Township also had the same thing, so I guess these text messages were going out pretty widely. I just want to point out to both you and the public that Milford Community Fire Department typically does one t-shirt sale a year and that is prior to October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we handle that internally, we don't put that out to any vendor for the sales part of it or anything, that's just kind of an informal sales process that we do in-house. So if anybody sees any kind of a operation who's selling any merchandise stating they're selling that on behalf of Milford Community Fire Department, it is not, it is not valid. And if anybody has any questions at any point in time, they're welcome to call either the police department or they can call the fire station and ask for me, 513-831-7777 and either I or the supervisor on duty should be able to answer their question. But again, we just, that's just not something that we do. So it's, that particular one was concerning and suspect and we turned it over to Chief Mills for some comment and maybe look into it. It's probably nothing that can be done about it, but it is not Milford Community Fire Department endorsed, so I just want to point that out. And I guess that's really all I have for this month, if anybody has any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, council comments, anybody have anything they want to share?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting for the purpose of meeting with the city law director to discuss legal matters involving the city pursuant to Section 3.053, excuse me, of the Milford City Charter. Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Any other council comments?
Yes, Mayor, we finished on, this past Monday, our third session of Building Bridges and I just wanted to let everybody know, the feedback that we get all the time is what a fantastic program it is and I want to thank the city for supporting the program and also to Copper Blue for opening up, they've opened up all three times special for us to have a celebration meal there, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, there being none, that will take us right into our ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Manier?
Thank you. Ordinance 2021-109, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Osborne Reconstruction Service for third floor...
Use your microphone.
Sorry. Ordinance 2021-109, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Osborne Reconstruction Service for third floor city hall improvements, therefore be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Osborne Reconstruction Service for improvements to the third floor of City Hall for the contract amount of $9,473.51. The terms and additions of the agreement are incorporated herein pursuant to Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, pardon me, pursuant to and according to Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only? Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-109, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Osborne Reconstruction Service for third floor city hall improvements.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
On this next ordinance, I don't know if the copies you have have been corrected, but they're on the Section 1, after the comma on the third line, to be payable in January 2022, that's to be deleted. Ordinance 2021-110, an ordinance authorizing rebates of water and sewer tap fees to True Hotel, now therefore be ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Section 1. The council of city Milford hereby authorize the city finance director to issue rebates to True Hotel for water tap fees in the sum of $36,000 and sewer tap fees in the sum of $38,000 for rebates totaling $74,000. Section 2, pursuant to and according to Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance should become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only? Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-110, an ordinance authorizing rebates of water and sewer tap fees to True Hotel.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Okay, so we will adjourn into executive session. We will be returning for the sole purpose of closing out the meeting. That will conclude this portion of the meeting. Everybody be safe and we'll see you, when's the next meeting?
November 16th?
16th?
I think.
See you then, have a good night.